To call the meeting to order, welcome. Today is August 14th, 2019. This is the School District of Waukesha Full Board of Education Meeting. Welcome. And what a wonderful summer evening. We're getting closer to the beginning of our school year. The next time we meet, we will be in the school year. So I hope everyone enjoys these last few weeks of summer. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinichak.
Here.
Joseph Como.
All of us are here. That's fantastic. So will you also verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. We do not have bright lights. And actually, we don't have any formal recognitions tonight, but I think we should... Can we turn the camera on yourself, Benjamin? Can you do that?
(laughing).
Find a one.
Benjamin has been in charge of our videography and...
Close up. Close up, Benjamin. Yeah.
Here we go.
Benjamin just graduated from Waukesha South this year, and he has been handling the camera workforce for two years now?
One year.
One year? Boy, it seemed like two years.
It's like a long time, doesn't it?
It seems like a long time. And Benjamin, actually, you do very sincerely, you do an excellent job. You've done a fantastic job, especially reminding us to speak out loudly when our microphones are either turned off or we're too far away from them. And I know you've also done some other jobs around here at the central office, and you've provided a great number of services, and we want to thank you for those services. And we wish you luck at UW-Milwaukee last year. Go and have a fantastic time and learn a lot. Thanks for all you do.[151.16][151.16](applause). That wasn't planned, Benjamin, right?[158.81][158.81](laughing). Okay, moving on to the part of our meeting where we allow our citizens to address the board. We give up to three minutes to hear from our constituents, and at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, we'll have Amanda provide a signal to have you wrap up in the final 30 seconds or so. We always appreciate hearing from our constituents. We do expect that all speakers honor the time limit and refrain from any inappropriate language in any manner. We also expect that the speakers are respectful in their comments, and speakers who do not meet these expectations will be prohibited from speaking at future board meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education by refraining with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that distracts from the meeting. So in order to also respect our speakers and the board, please silence your phones at this time. And we do have one person that is signed up to address us right now, and that's Paul Reese. Paul?
You know, these times are, darn it, are seemingly a violent time in our history, but it is only seemingly. There's been many times of a lot of violence in our past, and it seems that nowadays, we want to call for a law to stop it. You know, everybody wants a law to stop this. And Paul, when he writes his first letter to Timothy, he says, "Laws were written for the lawbreaker." In other words, I don't need a law to tell me not to do something. I don't need a law to tell me not to rape someone, not to murder someone, not to do that. That law's already written on my heart, you know? But we used to understand this, that who the laws were written for to punish people who already committed crimes. We used to understand who God was, and we agreed to be civil about God and to understand and have our differences about God, but honored Him. But understand that there is not perfection in Him. There is not perfection in others, perfection in Him, but not in us, I'm sorry. And King David talks about this, and he talks about it in Psalms 12 through 14. "But who can discern their own errors? Forgive my hidden faults; keep your servant also from wilful sin. May they not rule over me; then I will be blameless, innocent of great transgression." So he's talking about wilful sin, and anybody knows the story of David, he has problems here of wilful sin and learning to surrender to God. And we don't do this anymore. This is gone. It's gone from our lexicon here. It's just completely wiped out from society, this understanding, and we've lost civility. There's no... Civility has gone. We teach in our schools, let's say, global warming. We have a new curriculum for climate change, which the climate has always changed. I mean, there's woolly mammoths trapped under sheets of... under glaciers in Arctic, which were never there at one time. They didn't suddenly magically appear. But this is a definite, something that's definite. You can't talk about it with people. You can't have that conversation about it. It is what it is, you know? And this is a different time in society like that, where we've lost our faith in God, and we're starting to say, as they did in Joshua...
30 seconds.
Yes. Joshua, Judges. Judges, I believe, starts out with, "The people began to do what was right in their own eyes," and it's the way we see things. We see, "Look at what I have created. Look at what I have done." And that's something that's gone from any type of education that we teach our kids. That's why my daughter now attends Waukesha Christian Academy. Anyways, again, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address us at this time? Okay, thank you. Moving on to our minute approval, we do have two sets of minutes to approve. July 10th, regular board meeting, and also an executive session that was held on the same date, July 10th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Given by Mrs. Reinichak. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Cory? Any discussion? Any corrections? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
I'd love to.[483.12][483.12](laughing).
It's such a small meeting tonight. I guess I felt it was informal enough to just skip over the formality.
Mess with my discount.
Yeah.[492.62][492.62](laughing). I got a lecture coming from Sue now.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Abstain. Thank you for correcting me on that, Sue. Moving on to our communications report, given by Superintendent Gray.
We have no communications this evening.
Okay. Do we have a report, Diane, on the Waukesha Education Foundation?
Yes, Mr. President. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to thank the board members who were able to attend the Partners in Education reception that was held on July 23rd at the Tuscan Hall. It was a great success with nearly 100 in attendance. Seven of our annual sponsors were present, and 15 of our scholarship winners, along with their parents. You may have seen the article in The Freeman. I was quite impressed with the closing statement that was made there, identifying the fact that since 2002, the Waukesha Education Foundation has awarded close to $200,000 in scholarships from the endowed scholarship funds and nearly $300,000 in grants to educators. This is $500,000 of support for our students and staff in the School District of Waukesha in the first 17 years of the Waukesha Education Foundation. I think it's a pretty impressive community partnership that I'd like to sort of celebrate with all of you. Last Tuesday, over 125 golfers and 15 additional persons joined us for dinner to put fun into fundraising at the 13th Annual Waukesha Education Foundation Golf Outing. It was a wonderful day for golf, and there was a good turnout with two of our board members there to actually be on the course and another to support us with the activities going on. So I do want to say a special thank you to Bill and Cory and Amanda for their participation. There was a good mix of raffle, silent, and live auction items, and Scott Steele served as our emcee and auctioneer. So thank you to all who were involved, all of our sponsors and supporters, making that a really fun fundraising event for Waukesha Education Foundation. And then I have one more special thank you that I'd like to add after going to Hillcrest this afternoon for the 2019 Community Service Day. And I, again, a visual aid, this is my Service Day t-shirt that I was able to use. Didn't get too full of paint. The Waukesha Inio continued the GE tradition at Hillcrest today by helping them with their last three WEF grants. This is why it fits with this, in this context. They put in two more raised garden beds out front, and they put in a whole outdoor classroom area in the front of the school related to those raised beds, which I think was really impressive. This year's grant is an art project, and they put up the Hillcrest soars with some of the metallic birds, and the kids are going to be in the process of decorating 166, I believe, other birds that they cut out for them today and primed. They'll be ready to go, to be added to that display. So it was a great example of community involvement and supporting, you know, Hillcrest as well as the WEF initiatives that have been involved there as well. So that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Exciting stuff. Moving on to our charter school and program report, given by Mr. Baumgart.
I was going to say none, but I'm going to add on to hers.[709.12][709.12](laughing).
You have to say something after that.
She was working at the event last week also, Diane was, and I think something that I just thought about, there's something that was on there that I was real pleased with. We had all three of our high schools had a team represented there. Our technology department had a team there, and probably more, but with 125 people, I couldn't meet them all.[733.12][733.12](laughing). So, yes, Diane, it was a wonderful outing that way. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
I'm not going to send you a script on that either, Sue, so just forget.[744.12][744.12](laughing).
Moving on.
Moving on to our next item. Every year, we look at services that we receive from CISA-1, and just as any other year, I'd like to first talk a little bit about what those services are. Mr. Cook, will you bring us up to speed?
Sure. So in front of you, you have a copy of the CISA contract. Annually, the board does need to approve this. When you look at the expenditures for the program, you'll see stuff under there that's grant allocation. Those are grants that go to CISA that allow us to access programs, such as the RSN Network for Special Education. You see some title stuff in there. Those are things that the district is able to participate in. You'll also see some services on there where we are partnering with CISA for alternative placements. Those alternative placements serve students who are receiving special education primarily, but there are also some seats in there for students who are general education, perhaps at-risk, perhaps some students who have come to the board for expulsion and have been given services. So we do partner with CISA for a few of those seats as well. Primary expense with this contract.
Comments? Motion?
Here. This is an action item, and I would move for approval of the renewal of the Cooperative Education Service Agency CISA-1 contract.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Reinichak. Discussion? Joe, how does this compare to last year's services? Is it roughly the same?
Roughly the same. We monitor the at-risk and the special education seats very closely to see what we need. We purchase seats through CISA for what we need and what we need only. We do not buy seats in anticipation because we can get it at a prorated cost should we need to add as the school year goes forward.
How has the quality of service been?
It's one of the best alternative placements that we work with. For instance, the Turning Point and the Learning Center West seats do an excellent job, both from a communication standpoint, working with kids and families. Their educational services, kids seem to transition back to our district very well from the CISA placements, so we've been very happy with what they've provided.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on approving the CISA-1 service contract.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 9-0, Sue. Moving on to our consent agenda. Darren, did we have any gifts? All right. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. There were no expulsions, so I'm just going to ask if there's any board member that would wish to have any item set aside for a separate discussion. Okay. Kurt, would you please present the consent agenda?
Yeah, earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved five resignations, one leave of absence, and 17 new or modified teacher contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an endendum was placed at your desk this evening. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
We need a second on that motion?
I'm still done reporting.
Second.[976.12][976.12](laughing).
And is there any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 9-0, Sue. We're a little bit more relaxed in the summer, right, Kurt?[1005.32][1005.32](laughing). So am I.
I try to be relaxed all the time, Joe. It takes effort, but I try.[1009.32][1009.32](laughing).
All right. Thank you, Kurt. Dr. Gray, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yeah. At your desk tonight, it was in the Waspey Magazine, but I wanted to bring attention to it. It was about a school choice in Racine and how they've really benefited a number of their middle school students by offering full choice, much like we do through K-12. So I just wanted to note that we've been doing this since at least 2008, where we've provided full choice. I mean, there are some exceptions, depending on things like enrollments. If a school is too full, we sometimes have to close it, or if a student has a problem with tardiness or absenteeism, then sometimes we will deny the transfer. But overall, I think it's worked very well. It's been good to give our parents some choice, and I think that's helped stem some of the open enrollment issues. But that was a good article, and I just wanted you to note that we thought of it first, so... Another point, we are 19 days until the first day of classes. Athletics are in full swing. We're already having some competitions out there in sports like golf and tennis. And then this Friday is our first varsity football game for our high schools. And then the following week, you know, you are, the board is invited to the South and West game, and so could you get information to Sue regarding if you plan on attending? Because South is looking for numbers for that. If you've attended it, last year was an excellent event, and then the board has a reserved seating in the stands, and then at halftime, the board gets recognized by the South administration. So it's a really nice event. I know those of you who were there last year appreciated it, and I'm sure it'll be just as good this year, and hopefully the weather holds out as well. So that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. It's amazing, only 19 days left, so getting there. Yes. Moving on to our committee reports. This is where we do the heavy lifting, most of the work. We're going to, and we rotate which committees present first, and this month, first up, we have the Safety and Security Committee, given by Karen Reinichak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, there are four information items on the agenda. Update on status of school safety grant. New alert lockdown and network tool, which is Allen Technology, has been installed at our high schools. This automated tool ties multiple units together during a safety alert, including hallway speakers, classroom speakers, district phones, door access card readers, and door locks. The district utilizes the Standard Response Protocol, or SRP, as part of the emergency operations and crisis response plan. Steve Shloman demonstrated the Allen Technology for the committee and explained procedures during the specific SRP actions: lockdown, lockout, shelter, and evacuation drills. Door sensors are also being installed on all doors in conjunction with a door monitoring system. Next, we have Facilities Safety Improvement Update. Secure entrance construction projects are well underway at the elementary level, including Meadowbrook, Rose Glen, and Bethesda. The front offices at these schools are being moved from the middle of the building to the front of the building, and the secure entrance sequence will be in place at the conclusion of these projects. 2018-2019 Annual Health Nursing Services Report. District nurses completed the annual health nursing services report to the board, which includes data pertaining to the number of health room visits per school, health room staffing, AED, CPR, diabetic, EpiPen, Narcan, and other professional development training statistics. This report is in your packet. And last, we have the District Emergency Operations and Crisis Response Plan Annual Feedback. The Emergency Operations and Crisis Response Plan is reviewed annually. This year, principals provided some suggestions pertaining to number of safety drills and communication to families around drills to be considered. The next scheduled Safety and Security Committee meeting is October 21st, 2019, at 6 o'clock PM. This completes the Safety and Security Committee report.
Thank you, Mrs. Reinichak. Appreciate that. Moving on to our Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Turn on my mic. Thank you, sir. I keep our audio/video person busy back there. First item is approval of recommended candidate in the contract for position of Assistant Principal of Horning Middle School. The administration is recommending Brian Lidey for the position of Assistant Principal of Horning Middle School. Brian is a dynamic leader who values relationship-building with students, staffs, and parents. He believes it is up to educators to help students find out how they learn, not have students figure out how teachers teach. He values being visible, being proactive, and is an active listener. He has five years of experience as an administrator and has served in a dual-language school. Mr. Lidey is bilingual and bi-iterate in English and Spanish. He has served as an advocate for underserved students, underserved students, most notably creating a leadership forum to give students additional voice to help improve their education. Mr. Lidey has been a middle school teacher, a district curriculum generalist, and most recently has been the interim directing principal at Julian Thomas Elementary School in the Racine Unified School District. He received his Master of Arts in Education with National Lewis University and his Master of Science in Curriculum and Instruction from UW-Milwaukee. His Bachelor of Arts is from UW-Parkside with a communications major and a Spanish minor. Mr. Lidey's resume and contract were provided in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. I move to approve the recommendation and contract of Brian Lidey for the position of Assistant Principal of Horning Middle School.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion? Mr. Brian?
I just want to make sure the board's aware of the process. I mean, we wanted to make sure this person was able to attend some sessions, and so HR did a special meeting to review the application so that there would be at least a weigh-in from the board of some type on a preliminary basis for this candidate. I think we were able to have four people there, and we approved it as HR committee about a week ago in a special meeting it was called because they wanted to have this gentleman engage in some district activities. Outstanding candidate. I think we're very fortunate to have added a couple of great administrators in the last, over the summer, so great find, and I want to congratulate our administrative team for finding people of this caliber, and I'm also thankful people of this caliber apply to work in our district.
Other discussion?
I'd just like to thank the HR committee for holding a special meeting in order to get this Assistant Principal in place to work with the staff prior to this evening, so...
I think the candidate is an excellent match for Horning. If you take a look at the background that this gentleman has, it's, I think, a really good match for Horning, so fantastic. Other comments, questions? Sue, will you take the roll call vote?
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 9-0, Sue. Kurt?
The second action item is approval of the 2019-2020 base wage increase that was negotiated with the bargaining unit of the Education Association of Waukesha and approved by the educators on a 93% vote, affirmative vote. The 2019-2020 contract between the EAW and School District of Waukesha was negotiated on July 22nd, 2019, where a tentative agreement was reached. The EAW recommended a tentative agreement to the bargaining unit, which voted in favor of the proposal. The base wage increase of 2.44% for teaching employees is, in 2019 and 2020, will result in an effective increase of 1.46% per cell on the salary scale, other than the 4M16, which will increase a 2% increase, which will receive a 2% increase. I move to approve the 2019-2020 base wage increase for teaching employees as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Ms. Roddy. Discussion? Questions? Mr. Brian?
I'd like, again, to thank the administrative staff. We had a lot of discussions about this at HR. I believe that they took the input from the committee as a whole and formulated a plan to negotiate, which I did attend. I didn't change anything. I let the administrative team proposal go forward, and there wasn't anything worth changing, to be honest with you. But it was, the proposal the committee was recommending. I think the negotiation took some time, but it was very productive, the discussions with the EAW representatives. I mean, it was, there were certain things that they wanted, which we sort of halfway achieved, which was a slight increase for the so-called lock cell that has always been kind of held back a little bit because they don't get any of the supplemental increase, but still an increase for the other cells, which the committee was interested in as well.
Other questions? Comments? Darren, if we, if this does pass tonight, we still save some money because we can put things into effect from a payroll perspective. Is that correct? I know, so in the past, there have been times where we have not finished a contract with the EAW.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
And we've gone out many months into the next year, sometimes even a full year out, not coming to an agreement, and that costs us money to do the back pay. But if it passes tonight, we still prevent...
Yeah, we should be on schedule for staff. Yeah, you're talking back pay. We used to do back pay sometimes years back in the old days. But yeah, it certainly saves us a lot of staff hours and all that input that goes into back pay for nearly 1,000 staff members. It takes quite a while, so all that will be avoided by action tonight.
So just appreciate the administration, the EAW getting together to do this in a timely manner. Mr. Brian?
When we talk about base wages, I think it's important for the board, especially for new board members, to understand that it's based on the base, which is the bottom cell in the schedule, and then applying the CPI to that bottom amount, which is really far below what most of our teachers are being compensated at across the board. So the base wage does not really result in a cost of living increase. It's, year after year, it's been below the cost of living increase. So, you know, that's the way that's been set up through Act 10. We've generally tried to hold the base wage at the level it's been at throughout the schedule development. It's the only time an educator would get something that's at or above the CPI would be when we get the supplemental, which is not negotiable, not part of bargaining, and is also entirely up to the board as to whether to move forward with supplemental. But base wage is the part that we do bargain with the EAW. Year after year, we generally are able to give them the maximum per formula. Year after year, we generally are able to give them the maximum per our formula. There's no reason not to, because in reality, we get more in revenue based on the CPI than we apply to the base wage.
Other questions or comments? All right, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on approving the 2019-2020 base wage increase for the teachers' schedule?
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Abstain.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Sue, it passes eight zero one. Kurt?
The next item is the approval of 2019-2020 supplemental wages for teachers' employee group. A salary schedule is not subject to negotiation. In fact, it would be a violation of Act 10 to negotiate the schedule with the EAW. With the salary schedule that was implemented for the 2014-2015 school year, the board approved step and lane movements each year since then. So that was 14 years ago now, four years ago, excuse me. Using the approved salary advancement process, approved in August 2015, it is recommended that steps and lanes be approved for the 2019-2020 year in accordance to the Strategic Compensation Plan. I move to approve the supplemental wage increases for 2019-2020 for employees of the teacher bargaining group.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Standing by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
I will not be voting for this, even though I moved to move it forward. I will be moving to amend it. I'm going to state why. Year after year, we've been considered to be behind on the percent that we increase our teacher compensation when you add both the base and the supplemental together. Year after year, we run a surplus on our budget, and usually it's well over 300,000 to 500,000, up to $800,000 year after year. Year after year, we increase a number of our other staff members that aren't in the bargaining unit at the CPI level or above. So when we look at what we've been doing for year after year for this particular unit, it's been behind what we've been giving everybody else, and this year is no different. So with that, I'm moving to amend the amount to add an additional $250,000 to the supplemental wage package for the employee unit that we're discussing tonight. I so move.
Is there a second to that amendment?
A second.
Standing by Mr. Dietz. Questions? Discussion? Cory?
New guy question. Can you elaborate on how that will affect the teachers across the board in this unit?
Yes.
Okay.
Prior to us doing the schedule, we used to, Mr. Como was actually a kind of a, what should I say, an advocate for it. We used to do these stipends where we'd give them a flat amount for the year, and maybe it'd carry for the future years. In this case, this $250,000 is just a one-year. Here's $250,000 to be distributed amongst that employee group. At what time the district chooses to pay it, and the administration chooses to pay it, would be left up to them. It may be after we get through our decline of our fund balance, and so we can avoid borrowing, depends on how much we have in our fund balance. So it's a one-year deal. I mean, we're only authorizing $250,000 for one year. It doesn't carry over into next year. It's a one-year, here's $250,000 to distribute among the employees of that bargaining unit. In essence, about $250,000 to $300,000 per educational staff member, depending on how many members we have. Not hard to do, simple check, simple supplemental check. Certainly, we have the funds to do it. It's not that we don't have these funds to do it. We have a considerable fund balance, and we generally run a budget surplus every year. If I was going to $500,000 or $1 million, I would be a little bit more worried, but $250,000 is a small amount.
Cory?
Thank you. So your proposal has a condition of equally splitting that among all the teachers in that unit, so there's not preference for yours in service equal? Okay. Just so I'm clear.
That's every cell, is what you're saying?
Every staff person? Not every cell, it's every staff person in every cell.
Okay, gotcha.
That they're in. Talking people, not cells here, right?
Mr. Baumgart?
I want to be clear on that also. Thank you for raising that question. So regardless of the cell you're in, you would qualify for that amount of money, so it's flat across the entire population of teachers?
Correct. Makes it relatively simple, right?
Looks like it. And you say there is the money available?
Yes, there's the money available, and I think Mr. Gray could, or Mr. Clark or Mr. Gray could tell us what our fund balance is, but there's certainly $250,000 available in our fund balance. And considering that we usually are under budget by 300,000 to 500,000 to 600,000 to $800,000 a year, I'm not too worried about us running into red this year either, so.
Mr. Baumgart?
Has this been discussed with administrative staff?
We discussed different ways of trying to improve the supplemental pay. One way we came up with was just way too costly and was a long-term impact. This is much less costly, and it's just a one-year impact. So it's been discussed, but the bottom line is, it's up to the board, and all supplemental is up to the board. I don't think we should feel that $250,000 or 250 bucks a teacher, whatever it is, 250, 300 bucks a teacher, is an outrageous amount for us to be considering tonight in addition to the normal supplemental.
As head of Human Resources and Compensation, Kurt, why didn't you bring this up at the committee level?
Because I think it's something the full board should weigh in. And you know at the time when we approved this that I was going to bring this up here, which is any board member's option, by the way.
Sure.
Including the head of HR.
Technically, you are correct. I would have liked to have seen this brought up at the committee level and discussed more. Just like this evening, we had it at our HR committee, we had discussed whether or not our top-paid teachers are really being compensated in a competitive manner or not. We asked administration to do some research and some comparison. Hopefully, we'll have that in a few months. I would have liked to have seen this discussed more at the committee level, actually. Mr. O'Brien?
It would have been discussed more at the committee level if administration provided any comparative data, which I requested, but they didn't provide. Now, I'm not being critical of administration, because they felt that this should just go ahead as is. They didn't feel they needed to do the comparative data, but the reality is, 250 bucks isn't going to put us out of the realm comparative with anybody. And I do think this is a full-board discussion. I don't think it's a H&R committee discussion. We went to the committee, tried to amend it. It might have failed three to two, then I would have had to take it again to the full board and motion it, which I figured might as well just take it to the full board.
Cory?
I am at a general purpose or thought process, not against paying the teachers more. They work harder than just about all professions, and my particular individual opinion is they're underpaid. So I'm not against it, but I want to make a vote based on the best available information. So at this point, I don't have enough information. I'd like to reach or ask Mr. Clark, ask the administration how this would affect our proposed budget for the year. My recollection from FNF yesterday, I think it was, is we have a projected surplus of 352, but that's based on some assumptions that have not yet come to fruition yet. I know there was some discussion at FNF yesterday about a diving board, a music program, all these other things. If we had unlimited funds, I'd fund them all, but we don't. We have a responsibility to taxpayers to spend the money wisely. I'm not saying this is not wisely, but I would like to have some opportunity to discuss it with other board members prior to, a few minutes before voting on something this big. So I'm absolutely not against the idea. I would suggest maybe amending your amendment to table it to your prerogative, to allow myself and the other board members more time to try to get a better grasp on what's going on.
Was that a formal request for tabling?
Yes.
I don't know if that's in order to table an amendment.
I asked the same question.
A parliamentarian.
Well, I think you'd have to vote on it, and if it gets voted down, you could potentially table the original resolution, but I'm hoping we wouldn't do that for the reasons that Mr. Clark gave earlier on getting payroll figured out. But I believe that the amendment could be withdrawn to be placed at a future board meeting, or it would have to be voted on. I've never heard of tabling an amendment.
Got the card there, Joseph.
Yeah, I'm trying to quickly...
Should I call Pat Madden?
Yes, that would be great.
I can withdraw my request. I don't know if it was proper or not. I'd rather just have it discussed in the merits.
That's what we're trying to do, Cory. Instead of saying, "I don't want to deal with it because I don't have enough information", let's get the information out there. What's our fund balance, Mr. Clark? $35 million. We have a $35 million fund balance, and we can't take $250,000 and add it to our supplemental compensation for our educators? And we've been adding to that fund balance year after year, because we've been conservatively estimating our budget year after year. And when we begin giving other staff 4%, 5%, 6%, 8% increases year after year, I think it's because of my years of service on the board, plus I designed this schedule that makes me understand why this is appropriate at this point in time. And if we can turn down a one-year, $250,000 distribution to our educational staff and yet be willing to spend money on non-educational staff at that amount and higher and distribute it over 1,000 employees instead of two or three, which we do in other cases, I think that doesn't speak well for this board when we turn our back on this proposal. The board can choose to do as they wish, but I think this is the appropriate action to take.
Cory?
Last comment. I just want to be clear in my desire, I'm not against paying this if I have full information. And it's not punting, it's not delaying for the sake of obfuscation and hoping it doesn't come up again. I trust that if it's not voted on today, it'll be voted on the next board meeting or dealt in committee. So if it's an issue you brought up, which you have, I think it needs to be voted on, I'm just asking for some time to make an educated decision. Otherwise, I think I have to vote my conscience, and I don't make votes in complete information or with five minutes to educate myself on it.
Amanda?
I would have to agree with Mr. Montiel. It's not that we're trying to delay anything. I would also, at this point, vote no, because this has just been thrown on us. You've said that you created the schedule or were a part of it, and you've looked over this, but then you also came and said that this is a full-board decision, and apparently not all of us at this point are completely confident with what's been presented, so I would vote no at this point. But again, not against paying teachers.
Mr. O'Brien?
With a $35 million fund balance, that's not enough information for you guys to say there's nothing wrong with $250,000 for a one-year payment? I don't know how $35 million doesn't register.
Mr. Baumgart?
I'm of the same note. I think I would agree with doing this, but I think we have the reason to ask questions other than, is it just that much money? I think this troubles me. I think we can, there's motions here, we can put it on the table for a definite period of time or indefinite period of time, or we can just politely say, let's take it back and study it, like we do with policies periodically. I would prefer we not go ahead with this tonight.
Ms. Reincheck?
I feel the same way. There's ways that we do things, and for some reason, Kurt, you just want to bring things up like this and stir the pot. And if we don't have the information, how can we give the best response? As Cory said, we're responsible for this budget, and we're responsible to the people who make sure that this goes to the proper places, and we have so many things that we have to fund. You're pulling this out of a hat. It almost reminds me like if we were on vacation and someone just said, "Let's go to the time machine and just take out a bunch of money," without seeing the amount that we have, our bills, what we have to pay for, what's coming up, what can we budget for. It's not appropriate. And if you can say, "Yep, I designed this, and I designed this, and I've got all the answers, and we're okay," how can you expect us to make that same decision? If you're completely confident in all of our fund balance, every place that, we just had a meeting two days ago about where things are going, and you weren't there, so how can you know what's in our fund balance, where our bills are, where we are with that, and then just expect all of us to just vote yes with you? I don't understand. There's a procedure, and there's nine of us here. This isn't the Kurt Show.
You know, Ms. Reincheck, that's getting personal, and I take exception to that. Just because you don't like the proposal, you don't need to attack people, okay? I will say, call the question.
I don't... Calling questions, is that requiring a vote?
Yeah, but I think you can still have discussion after called question. Is that correct?
I don't think so.
Call the question.
No debate. It's a two-thirds majority.
You need a two-thirds majority to close the debate.
Yeah, so you have to have two-thirds to close the debate, and if you don't get the two-thirds, we're still on the amendment, and you can have more discussion. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so...
Yeah, or unless there's no more debate, then you can just go into the, you know, voting on the debate.
Right, right. So right now, what we need to vote on is the called question.
Called question is a...
You need to get two-thirds.
Not debatable.
It's not debatable, but there's a vote, right?
Two-thirds vote, call the question.
Yes, so we would need, we would need six people to say that they want to call to question. So with the vote right now, if you vote yes, you want to call to question and actually take a vote on the amendment. A no vote is you don't want to call it to question right now, you want to keep discussing the amendment. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any questions on that?
Do we need a second for the called question, or no?
I don't believe there is.
Call the previous question, seconds required.
Oh, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Standing by Cory. So a yes vote is you want to end the discussion on the amendment, not the whole thing, but the amendment. And a no vote is you would like to continue discussing the amendment.
A yes vote, call the question, then after that you'd have to follow up with...
The vote.
The vote.
Right.
Amendment.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Correct.
Is that clear?
Now, there's one more point that should be made there.
Just want to be clear, if it doesn't carry, that means we continue discussion.
Right.
If it's positive, it means we end discussion, we go ahead and take a vote on the amendment.
Yep.
Take a vote on it, comes out as a no on the amendment.
The only way that that can be changed at a later time is by the people that voted no.
Against it, yes, that is correct.
Well, that's not really true.
That's on the future.
That's not really true. We can always bring it up as a separate item. This is amendment to a present motion, so it can always be brought up if someone chooses to as a separate item and let it be a separate date.
So let's just deal with the called question right now, and not future potential other things we can do. So right now, I'm going to have Sue call the vote on the called question. A yes vote is you do want to end discussion on the amendment, and no vote is you would like to continue discussion. Okay, Sue.
Diane Voight.
No.
Cory Montiel.
Yes.
William Baumgart.
Yes.
Greg Dietz.
Oh.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Yes.
Amanda Roddy.
Yes.
Kurt O'Brien.
Yes.
Joseph Como.
No. So it succeeds, so we have no more discussion on the amendment, and right now, we're going to move to vote on the amendment. So a yes vote would be that you are in favor of taking $250,000 out of our fund balance and distributing that to each and every teacher.
Amanda Roddy.
No.
Diane Voight.
Abstain.
Cory Montiel.
No.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
No.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
No.
Patrick McCaffrey.
No.
Joseph Como.
No. Amendment fails. Two yeses, six nos, and one abstain.
Now we go back to the original...
So now we go back to the original motion, which is looking at the supplemental... So now we go back to the original motion, which is looking at the supplemental wages for 2019-20 as presented.
Diane Voight.
Abstain.
Corey Montiel.
Excuse me, we're allowed to debate the original motion.
Yeah, there is, there is, yes, we can. Yeah, I will take that, did I direct you, Sue, to take the roll call vote? I apologize in that. We can continue to debate the original. I, I take that back, sorry about that, Sue.
Not that I'm trying to debate, but I thought.
Yep, nope. Are there any other questions or conversation on the original motion? Okay. Sue, now we can take the vote.
Okay. William Baumgart.
Yes.
Greg Dietz.
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Hi.
Karen Reincheck.
Hi.
Amanda Roddy.
Yes.
Kurt O'Brien.
No.
Joseph Como.
Hi. Who's that?
Seven, one and one.
Seven, one, one. Thank you. I lost count there in the middle.
Okay.
Okay, Kurt.
Um, let me see.
So that, that does pass.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kurt. Sometimes we do miss Pat Madden, huh? We use a, an amended Roberts rules as most boards of education do, so fortunately, that's a little bit more forgiving too, so. Moving on to our policy committee given by Mr. Baumgart.
Okay, policy committee has nothing to report tonight. Those of you that are planning to come our next meeting next Tuesday, aside from the members of the committee that won't be there either, you don't have to come to that meeting next week. And be prepared, we've got a lot of stuff in the process. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Moving on to technology given by Mrs. Voight.
We have not met, but we are in the process of trying to schedule our first meeting for Wednesday, August 28th at 5:30.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to finance and facilities given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. President. The FNF committee met on August 12th and on the agenda we have six action items, three information items and one discussion item. The first action item is the approval of the 2019-2020 budget for publication. The committee was presented a preliminary budget for publication totaling 207,559,181 dollars in revenue and 222,733,813 dollars in expenditures. The budget adoption format is on page three of the budget booklet included in your packet for review. With the approval of the board tonight, the preliminary budget will be presented to the public at the budget hearing on September 11th, 2019 at 6:30 PM prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting. The final 2019-2020 budget and tax levy will be approved in October. The committee approved the 2019-2020 preliminary budget for publication and ISO move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, I saw Mrs. Voight's hand up first. Discussion. Corey?
I was just going to highlight, and first of all, thank the, the staff and the, Mr. Clark and Sheri and everyone else in the department who put this together, the superintendent. It's, it's, for someone who's not well-versed in these numbers, it's relatively easy to read. The budget highlights were interesting and impactful. I did want to point out that at FNF, we did discuss on page one of the budget, the highlights for the property tax levy, the mill rate in this proposed budget for 1819 was seven dollars and eighty cents. It's projected to be preliminarily at 8.51. There's been some discussion with the school district to try to delineate how much of that is tied directly to the referendum. So I think that as this budget gets finalized, it's going to be able to track easier. And it's, it's clear here, but it's, for me, to be able to explain it to constituents and other board members, I think that'll be helpful.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and Darren had said that we would be able to do that and we'll look forward to that, Darren, as you break that out for us. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. Also, over the years, I do appreciate the summary format that we have now. We used to get, you know, seventy, seventy-five, eighty, a hundred pages and it was tough to go through that. That was a summary. It's like, no, this is a summary, so thank you for whittling those important numbers down, we appreciate that. Any other discussion or comments on the preliminary budget for publication? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
William Baumgart.
Hi.
Kurt O'Brien.
Hi.
Amanda Roddy.
Hi.
Karen Reincheck.
Hi.
Greg Dietz.
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Hi.
Diane Voight.
Hi.
Corey Montiel.
Hi.
Joseph Como.
Hi. Passes nine, zero. Kurt? Or I'm sorry, Patrick, sorry, out of habit.
All right, thank you. Our second action item is the approval of the 2019 preliminary tax levy. The committee was presented a preliminary tax, a preliminary 2019-2020 property tax levy totaling 86,126,390 dollars and a projected tax rate of eight dollars and sixty-one cents. A tax levy summary is on page four of the budget booklet included in your packet. The preliminary tax rate is a seventy-one cent increase from the previous year due to the referendum debt. This tax levy and rate information will also be presented at next month's budget hearing. The final 2019-2020 tax levy and rate will be finalized in October once resident enrollment counts are known and the state of Wisconsin certifies property values and state equalization aid. The committee approved the 2019-2020 preliminary tax levy as presented and ISO move.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Montiel. Discussion. Kurt?
I will be opposing the tax rate this year for the first time and it's mainly my concerns over how we're levying the community service levy and what we're using those funds for. I'm not confident that we're using those funds appropriately, so I'm going to vote no on the levy.
Need a comments or discussion? I'm not sure if I understand. That's okay. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on the 2019-20 preliminary tax levy.
Corey Montiel.
Hi.
William Baumgart.
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Hi.
Karen Reincheck.
Hi.
Kurt O'Brien.
No.
Amanda Roddy.
Hi.
Greg Dietz.
Hi.
Diane Voight.
Hi.
Joseph Como.
Hi, passes eight, one. Sue? Patrick?
Thank you. Our third action item is the approval of the String Academy contract. The committee discussed the future funding of the String Academy contract. There will be data analysis over the next few months to determine the viability of the contract for 2020 and 2021 and beyond. The committee approved the 2019-2020 String Academy contract and ISO move.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Dietz. Discussion? Ms. Baumgart?
Yeah, last time I heard about the String Academy was years ago and I'm just, five years ago? Is it still there? Is it doing things? Is it being used by people, you know? The health line here.
Good, good question. At our committee meeting, we wanted to have a better understanding of how that program is coming along. And as a matter of fact, we thought that there's really two components to this. One is understanding that group and we felt that that was more of a TNL discussion. And then there's the financial component to it. So there's going to be some research that's going to be done by administration to dig a little deeper into various aspects of, of the program itself. Mr. O'Brien?
Contrary to comments earlier tonight, I did watch the FNF meeting on Monday night and I saw the discussion on this topic as well as a couple other topics. And I do appreciate the idea of having TNL pick it up and study it and how it's being done and where we're at with the program. Also, the String Academy, I believe that's, that's been funded by the community service levy fund balance.
Correct.
And we've been.
Well, partially, I mean, there are fees for it.
Yeah, there's fees, so.
The, the, Fund 80 has supplemented it.
So we haven't really kept Fund 80 up in order to continue to fund this like we probably should have. If you look at the String Academy, it's set up to be a, not only for school district children, but any resident of the district to participate in, which allows it to be funded by the community service levy and that any resident of district is eligible for the program. I remember the questions asked at FNF is, you know, I think Ms. Reincheck asked the question, "How well is this publicized? Do enough people know about this that are, you know, either within the, the school district system itself or outside the school district?" So I think there's a lot of things to be brought up at the TNL element of it. I don't think it's a good idea to envision discontinuing it or defunding it at this time until we have more time to look at it and it's an appropriate use of the community service levy and it's always been an important part of the school district of Waukesha to have this program.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, discussion on the contract for the String Academy? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Greg Dietz.
Hi.
Karen Reincheck.
Hi.
Corey Montiel.
Hi.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Hi.
Diane Voight.
Hi.
William Baumgart.
Kurt O'Brien.
Hi.
Amanda Roddy.
Hi.
Joseph Como.
Hi. Passes nine, zero and it goes on, this is a, a one-year contract, just, I don't know if we mentioned that, but it's one year. And we will actually see what kind of research our administration can do to, to bring back to us. So I know, I know it's been an impactful program for, for a number of young students, so we'll see what, see if it still is and whether or not it makes sense to, to move forward with it next year.
Thank you, Mr. Como.
Moving on to your next, there's quite a few action items, Mr. McCaffrey.
There's a couple on here. Our fourth action item is the approval of the School Resource Officer Agreement. The district has had SROs in the high schools since 2001, 2002 school year and one in the middle schools since 2016. The committee was presented a five-year contract with the City of Waukesha Police Department. The new agreement not only maintains the current four SRO position, positions, it adds two officers to the middle schools. The proposed contract would cost an average 431,740 dollars per year. The school district of Waukesha's percentage of the officer's expense increases from 59% to 65% over the term of the agreement, which is equivalent to the SRO's percentage of work in the district. The program will be funded 50% by the Fund 80 Community Service Fund and 50% by Fund 10 General in the 2019-20 budget. The committee approved the School Resource Officer Agreement with the City of Waukesha Police Department covering the 2019-2020 through 2023-2024 school year as presented and ISO move.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
I don't want to spend a lot of time on this because we spent plenty of time on this already. I, I just want to say that the school district in all areas, whether it's academic, you know, services it provided or in this case, school security, we should always be trying to look to be as good as we can at that particular function if we feel, if we feel it's important. We should be as good as we can at educating kids because we feel educating children's important. We should be as good as we can in providing school, school security. And we should also be as prudent as we can in how we use taxpayer dollars. I mean, I made a proposal tonight for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to pay our educators, a thousand employees. This is going to cost the district an extra two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to add two, two officers to our school. No one has a problem with that. I think, I watched the discussion at FNF and I want to compliment Mr. Clark because I think he did a great job of making sure all the issues were covered. I mean, he said, "Look, if this doesn't get approved, we're still going to have school resource officers in our school, we just won't be expanding it at this time because we didn't approve this new agreement." So this is not about, and this is going to pass tonight, it's probably going to pass eight, one or seven, two, I don't know where it'd be, somewhere in that range. So that's like I said, I don't want to spend too much time on it. But I look at what happened over the weekend, 32 seconds, 26 people shot. Is one school resource officer going to make our, our school safe? I think not. You know, today there were six police officers shot, so good guys with a gun get shot when they confront these people. I think it's more important to look at how these people get created, especially young people that come back and shoot up anything, a concert, a park, a school. That's where our resources should be at as a district, is trying to make sure that we try to address these, to make somebody feel like they're part of the community instead of outcast. I would find the money much better used, and I'm not against having school resources officers, in fact, I've always defended it. But I think the money's much better used if we look at how we engage our kids, make sure that they're, felt like they're part of the community. You know, a few years ago, we passed a policy which we've since repealed, which I was the one no vote on the policy, to not let kids graduate unless their fees were paid. Is that right? We decided eventually it wasn't. It wasn't even defensible. I think we need to look hard at what we want to be as a community and how we want to treat our kids. And when it comes to the school resource officers, we don't have a job description, we don't have a performance survey, we don't have a performance analysis, we don't even set expectations for these people. Now, I think, you know, there's things that a school resource officer can do in our building that if a staff member did, they'd be terminated. So the only thing I would say in trying to improve the, the contract is there, and I haven't looked at the contract directly, I did look at the previous one, there was a clause in there that said the chief of police would communicate to the administration when it replaced the word collaborate, which doesn't, the word collaborates a much better word than the word communicate. It means that the police chief or the police department has to work with the district in these issues. Instead of just being a very heavy-handed, the police chief's going to tell you this and you're going to go along with it. That's the only way I could feel comfortable with improving the contract, but since I'm going to vote against it anyway, I, I'm not going to push for that change even though I think it should be changed. There's, and then, there's so many things wrong with this in terms of how we've gone about it, but at the same time, I'm partially responsible for that. I don't think I really handled FNF well. We probably should have done most of this in closed session instead of so much in open session. The bottom line, we weren't ready to make a change in this program as a board or as a district. But it's a program we should be, just like when we were talking tonight about teacher compensation, we should be encouraging administration to look at alternatives because this is not the only way we should be serving these students. There's other ways that we probably should be looking at serving these students. Our newest board member has first lone no vote on the policy that I was opposed to, I wasn't here that night, that allows these officers to, to interrogate students about notifying their parents. I think Mr. Moyno should vote against it alone for that, you know, if he really felt strongly about that, he probably shouldn't be supporting this. I know he's voted for it all along, but it's, it's a matter of principle and sometimes it's important for a board member to stand on principle. And I want to thank, you know, some of my other board members last month when I talked on this subject and I explained my feelings. I could see some board members nodding their hair, their head, that at least they understood my feelings, which was nice. Didn't mean they agreed with me, but at least they understood that. But I'm not against school resource officers, I've always been a big fan of them. I'm against the way the district is using the resource and I'm against the way that the, the city has evolved to using our tax dollars twice. They're asking us to pay twice for these officers. Milwaukee Public Schools doesn't pay a dime for the officers in their school. You can't tell me that part of the community policing obligation is not to provide officers and security to our schools. That's what we pay taxes for. And yet we're expected to foot the whole bill for these officers when they're in our school. Because that's what that calculation is, 67% is based on the time they spend in our[1773.56] That's what we pay taxes for. And yet we're expected to foot the whole bill for these officers when they're in our school. Because that's what that calculation is, 67% is based on the time they spend in our schools. So I don't agree with the increase. If they weren't increasing it, I'd probably go ahead and vote for it. And I still think we need to work on how we utilize these officers and, and come up with guidelines and the way we want to do this moving forward. Takes more time than what we've had and, so I understand why people would vote for this tonight, but I, I just can't.
Other comments, discussion, questions? Mr. Dietz?
I want to thank administration and city officials involved for coming up with this agreement in a timely manner on behalf of our, the safety of our students and staff. I've been really pleased with the school resource officers over the years, their level of service, their accessibility, the relationship building that they've had, which lends itself to trust and respect, and that's a two-way street. This agreement also provides administration with more input into the selection of the SROs and also increases the community involvement of the officers. And I'm also pleased that within this agreement, our officers continue to have connections with each elementary school. So I will be supporting it tonight.
Diane?
I would ask for Darren to share his clarification on item five, duty hours subsection C that we had talked about at, at FNF, related to police department will assign another qualified officer to substitute for the absent SRO beginning on the sixth consecutive day of absence.
That's been, that's been fixed.
That's, I mean, anybody who watched that meeting, you know, just the clarification that that has been changed.
Yeah. Todd had a conversation with the city manager Tuesday and they signed off on three days because six days seemed excessive. I think it's important to have a number in the contract and I think three was a big step forward for us.
Number?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody who watched?
And that's, and that was what was put forth with that amendment or that change in there, so.
It's in here.
Yeah, it's been changed.
The new copy, yeah.
Not in our copy, a new copy.
We received a new copy on Tuesday.
The one last Friday said six, six days. FNF had a conversation on Monday, Todd was able to meet up with the city administrator, Mr. Lehman and, Lehner, and was able to change that to three days.
Okay.
Five C, that is.
Thank you.
Other comments, discussion? Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate the relationship that we have with the police. I, I do think the SROs play a super important role in our schools and, and I do think we need to expand to all middle schools. We have one SRO that's bouncing around between three middle schools and the reason why this board wanted to move to having each, an officer at each of those schools is just the number of students. And it will help. I think it will help in a, in a great manner in terms of to also prepare these middle school students for high school from a behavior and a safety perspective. And, you know, our SROs are, are people who get involved at many aspects of the culture of each school. They're integrated into each school. They're not just people standing around looking for kids doing bad things. So if you ever go to the schools and see how the SROs integrate into the culture, I think, I know I've been pleased with how that has occurred. Any other comments or discussion on the SRO contract? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
No.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Karen Reinicek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight, zero. Patrick?
Thank you. Our fifth.
Eight, one. Eight, one.
Oh, eight, one, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sue got the count right. My math is off tonight.
Our fifth action item is the approval of E-Achieve contract change. The Department of Public Instruction has an issue with one sentence in the E-Achieve Elementary Contract that was approved by the board in May. Without the change to the sentence located in the description of the educational program of the school, DPI would withhold funding. In short, we are removing a mandate that parents need to implement a learning plan as developed by the teacher and instead changing the sentence to encourage parents to be present to assist with technical assistance and ensuring the child is staying on task. The committee approved the change to the E-Achieve Elementary Contract and ISO move.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
Saying by Diane? Discussion?
Somebody doesn't have enough work to do in Madison.
A whole bunch of people don't have enough work to do in Madisonville.
Diane?
And as I said, at Finance Facility, it says that essentially they will withhold funding unless we get this resolved. So let's do it.
So who are they punishing? The kids?
Yeah.
Kurt?
I watched the committee and, you know, they had a legitimate concern. I mean, if you're asking parents to do the teaching for you, is that really what's expected? And, and obviously later on in the contract, it makes it clear that's not what we're doing, but that wording should not be in the contract. And so I'm glad people take the effort to clean stuff up. We should all follow their example, even though we don't want to say we have too much time on our hands.
I, I actually think the new verbiage matches the intent of what we originally wanted. So I think it's good in that manner, so. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, Sue, let's see if we can amend the E-Achieve contract so we can get funded.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Karen Reinicek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine, zero. Sue, Patrick?
Thank you. Our sixth and final action item for this evening is the approval of Montessori School of Waukesha lease. The Montessori School of Waukesha is interested in leasing just over half of Blair Elementary School during the 2019, 2020 school year while their school site is under construction. This lease will benefit both parties. We will have a known tenant paying utilities and rent and it will give the district time to investigate other options for the building. The committee approved the Montessori School of Waukesha lease of Blair for the 2019, 2020 school year. Per board policy, this falls under the authority of the finance committee. There is no action needed from the board. It was agendized on the board agenda in case further consideration would have been needed. Moving on to our information items.
Mr. Clark?
With, with FNF, there's no, there was no reason to vote, but with FNF, my packet goes out the same day the board packet goes out. So to be ready for the board in case the committee would afford it to the board for further consideration, I have to cover my basis, otherwise we're running out new board agendas or we miss the deadline. So it was put there just as a placeholder, but it, it fell under the purview of FNF and they voted five, zero, so.
And that's per our policy, following our policy. Patrick?
Very, thank you. Information items, we have three information items. The first information item is the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditure continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well. Our second information item is the referendum update. Darren Clark provided an updated on the summer 2019 projects. All 11 sites under construction are on budget and schedule and will be substantially completed by the first day of school. Please visit the district's webpage to find the facility improvement page with current project updates and other related information. Our final information item is the 2018, 2019 year-end projection. The committee would like to use $453,541 of the general fund surplus to pay back the second half of the health claims payable reserve used to cover high claims two years ago. The first half was paid back last year. Overall, our unaudited fund balance will be increasing by $46,979,166, mostly due to referendum funds. And we have one discussion item on the agenda this evening, and that would be the Waukesha North Pool removal of diving board. The committee discussed the replacement of the North High School diving board. North pool depth does not meet current requirements for a diving board and doesn't maintain the desired depth as it slopes to the shallow end. North was grandfathered in regards to regulations surrounding the depth of the pool for a diving board. But due to liability issues, it has been difficult in finding a company willing to install a diving board for a pool that doesn't meet current requirements. Currently, North divers will practice at South but still compete on the North team. Administration will continue researching possible solutions.
This is a discussion item. Does anyone want to comment or ask questions on, on this? Mr. Bryan?
I think it's the fact that it, it changes some of the programs. They won't, they won't be able to do diving. We do have diving with our swimming team and that will eliminate, this will eliminate some of the programs.
What we'd like to do is replace the diving board with a good one. That's what we would like to do, but we're having trouble, and Darren, maybe you can elaborate on the trouble that we're having with the contractors.
Yeah, that's why I posted or agendized this discussion was, you know, one of those avenues is, a lot of high schools in Wisconsin have just removed their diving boards altogether, but we couldn't go on with what we had. So we, and I think the committee gave me some paths that we can look into and we'll bring it back and to see whether, what the best option is at that time. But I just wanted to make everyone aware that we were, we were struggling with a situation you would otherwise think was very simple, you know, the repair of a piece of equipment. But a lot of liabilities surrounding pools and diving boards and those types of things.
Bill?
So we're saying that the one that was put in at South, whenever that was, 10 years ago, so that's okay.
It's okay right now. I, I don't know where they fit in terms of the realms of the current regs.
That's changed.
But it's grandfathered in and as long as you don't replace it, and I think that was part of the problem in North is, we kept that one to the point where it wasn't safe to use anymore, so it forced our hand to replace it. And that's what triggers, yes, the board itself.
But is, is the pool at South deep enough to make that 12?
I, I would have to double check that.
I hope so.
I don't know off the top of my head.
We're going to hear from one of our friends about that.
Mr. Mantow?
Thank you. It's actually a pretty interesting situation. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clark, is when the board was installed at Waukesha North, it met administrative code and all diving agency standards. Now that we, it's out of date, needs to be replaced, a contractor will not install it because they are worried that if they install it over the pool as it exists now at North High School, it will not be up to administrative code and therefore they could be liable. So there was some discussion among the committee members to enter into what's called indemnification agreement with the contractor. So if they are, if someone is unfortunately injured and there's a lawsuit, the school district could indemnify through our own insurance policy or whatever to do that. I know there's inherent risk with diving. I would be very hesitant to suggest just removing the board. If we compare football and wrestling and gymnastics statistically, and I think just numerically, the amount of injuries from diving compared to those, I think would be dramatically more than, than diving. So just because the population that uses that board is relatively small, I think we have an obligation to be a voice for them and try to say, look, let's try to get a creative way that lets this board get replaced at North High School. And, you know, try to save some money in doing so as well.
Mr. Bryan?
Isn't this an issue that because you're talking about changing a program, that should be at teaching and learning to decide what, what is the program scope?
I don't know if it's a, if it's, it's not a academic program, it's co-curricular.
Well, I mean, why would co-curricular be at facilities and finance? I'm trying to figure out, wouldn't you want that, these programs to be at teaching and learning? I, I really think it's something where we should define what we want for the program at, at North High School and other schools. And it's, it's a physical education part of the program as well. So once we define whether we want it or not, I think that will drive whether we decide to keep it. And I think that's the purpose of this discussion tonight, right?
We're trying to get all opinions on it.
So I, I think it really should be referred to teaching and learning and we can provide our recommendation.
I just have one question, just to the teaching and learning. Do they use it for gym class?
No.
They don't? Okay.
I mean, this really comes up as a maintenance project. That's why it starts in FNF, so. We'll, we'll see what your research finds, Mr. Clark. Any other questions or conversations on?
It's only a maintenance project if we plan to keep it. I mean, it seems like the issue is, do we want to keep it or not? I, if that's, if that's the issue.
It would have been replaced by now if we found a contractor to replace it because it was due to be replaced. And we would have just done that within our operational costs. Is that correct, Mr. Clark? And this would have never became an issue because, and it only became an issue because we couldn't find a contractor to do it.
There's a fair chance I wouldn't have known they even replaced it. It would have just been replaced as, along with other.
It's part of our routine.
It became a larger issue.
Maintenance schedule, so. It only came to light because we couldn't find someone to replace it. Otherwise it would have been replaced. All right? Okay. Patrick?
That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to teaching and learning, given my, Mr. Dietz?
Nothing to report this evening, Mr. President. We did not meet last month. However, our next meeting is Tuesday, September 3rd at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom.
Okay. Only 19 days, we start school, so there's going to be a whole bunch next month that you'll be reporting on.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our other businesses. Is there any other recommendations for, or any recommendations for agendized items at the full board or at the committee levels? Ms. Reinicek?
Yeah, I was just wondering exit interviews for families, families that do end up leaving our district or schools, going other places. Did we ever follow up on families? I thought there was.
Not, not yet, we haven't. I mean, once we know who's gone, we don't, we won't know who has left until, you know, unless they've moved away for, for other purposes. But I mean, in terms of open enrollments, we won't know that until after school starts.
So that's.
We have done, we have done, in past years, we have done surveys, not, not every year, but we have done surveys and.
I feel like we've talked about it and.
Yeah, it's all over the board. I mean, different reasons. I mean, I, we're not noticed for that now, but I mean, there are, you know, we can dust some of those off.
So we probably could do one of two things. We could refer that to the H, HR committee probably, or we could just have you put that information in a packet.
Yeah, well, I could, yeah.
If it was like a pie or something that said, okay, 30% left due to sports at other schools.
We, we don't, I would say, many of them, we don't get the actual answer.
Oh, okay.
I mean, the answer given is, is not really the, for whatever reason. I mean, that, that's been our experience with the surveys.
Sometimes we're talking about, okay, well, you know, people are leaving because we don't have enough programs or our STEM program is a good reason that draws people in. Like if we actually had those statistics, we could look at them, so.
Or that might even be a, I said HR, it might even be a T and L study, but, Mr. Bryan?
Yeah, you know, we talked earlier tonight about compensation and the schedule. I think we need to get the administration to prepare, based on CISA, our CISA district that we're in, CISA one.
CISA. You should, I mean, CISA one takes in Milwaukee, Kenosha, Racine, you want?
Yeah, I do. That's, that's the economic strata we're in. We're not in Appleton, we're not in La Crosse, we're not in Oshkosh. So I think CISA one would be, it'd cover Classic Eight, our conference, Waukesha County. So I think that's worth having to see.
Yeah, would literally cover, yeah.
Because we lose teachers to Milwaukee, we lose principals to Milwaukee. I find it very interesting that every time we talk about administrator salaries, we have all this comparative information, but we haven't had comparative information on our educators for about five years now. And I think we should have, we should have had that, right? So we can have the information people are asking about tonight over $250,000, but, you know.
And through your committee, we have asked for that, so we should get that, so, hopefully.
I'd like to have it actually delivered. It's been asked for, but it's never been delivered because apparently it's not a priority for administration.
Any other suggestions for future meetings, topics? Mr. Mantow?
Maybe not a suggestion, but just requesting a point of clarification. I don't want to do, regarding Mr. O'Brien's suggestion, what I said I wouldn't do and just punt this and let it wither on the vine. So is it coming back for a future discussion or in the administration will provide the comparative? I guess I need a better picture as it, anyway, it looks like we have the money in the bank. Can we afford it? Is it, what's the district's position or administration's position on, should that be distributed as proposed? I guess I don't want to come back in a month and have this brought up again and still